I am going to call.
Recording in progress.
Call to order. School committee meeting number 1,662 of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District at 6:00. Okay. Kyle, welcome. So we've got one, two, three.
We have seven.
Okay. I was pretty sure we were okay. So I am going to ask for a moment of silence out of respect for the loss of one of our class of 2018. I had to write this down so I would be okay. Charles Nathan Hawkins-Curson, a class of 2018, passed earlier this week. Not only has it impacted the lives of so many students, it has impacted the larger community as Charles was involved in everything from Shakespeare to the comedies to pottery to everything in the community and he engendered so much love. He touched the lives of hundreds of people throughout our communities and people are sharing a major loss. Additionally, as most of you know, his mom, Susan Hawkins, worked here for a number of years and staff and faculty really enjoyed working with her. What I find is that everybody is grappling with how do you help Susan, Adam, and the three, the twins, and Charles's older brother? The family's asking for privacy. We're respecting that and I'm just asking in memory of a life that ended way too soon that we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. With that, let's move on to the school committee minutes.
I have a point of order.
Yes, sir.
Unrelated to what you just said, although it would seem not to be, but it is. I mean, it seemed to be, but it isn't. I move that the school committee recognize the very long service of and continued service of and hope for a speedy recovery of Art Bataki.
That was going to be in my chairman's report.
Oh, so I move that we, that the school committee expresses appreciation for all the work that he and his wife have done for the district and that we wish him a speedy and successful recovery from his recent surgery.
And since we're doing it out of order, I'll take a second to that. Okay, do we need to have any discussion?
Well, I also, I move that we, that we adopt the motion by unanimous consent.
Okay, do you accept that? Whoever seconded that?
Yes.
Okay. So I will say Beth will report more detail, but Becky said he's doing, it's going to be really long, but he's doing quite well.
That's what I've heard.
Yes.
I don't have any more detail than that.
So does anyone object to unanimous consent? Seeing no objection, your motion has been approved.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Let's go to the school committee minutes. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of those minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a second to Carl's?
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. I hope you're feeling better.
Getting it.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or anything? The one thing I have is in the school committee members, David was not here, but he's noted as being here first and then he's listed under regrets. So we're sure there aren't two of you, right?
That would be nice, but sadly not.
So in that case, we will take him out of the first part. All right, thank you. Does anyone else have any? Yes, Kyle?
Yeah, in the business with district member towns, I think it said in the vote that I abstained. I'm pretty sure I voted yes there. I abstained from the minutes.
Oh, the minutes, yes. Okay, so let's change that. All right. So under roll call vote with under 7A, we're changing Kyle from abstain to yes. All right, any, any other comments? All right. Seeing none, I will accept a vote. I'll start. Kyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Abstain.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
And I'm a yes. So we have one abstention and we have the remainder as yes. Okay. Moving along. Let's, any receipt of correspondence?
No, no miscellaneous correspondence.
All right. Do we have a student representative report?
We will not have one tonight. We have a whole bunch of extracurricular activities going on, a couple basketball games, and so we didn't have anybody available. There will be somebody here on Monday as well.
Okay, great. Do you happen to know offhand when senior night are for our teams?
I believe the boys are February 5th because I believe that's their last home game before the tournament. I think the girls will be the following week.
Okay.
Because of the way they do the different Western Mass tournament, you're not guaranteed home game, so they're going to try to do it. But I know the boys is next week.
So could you, for any of us who want to attend, could you ascertain if those dates are correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Do we have a student spotlight?
We sure do. Mr. Thompson's going to be, and Mr. Miller?
He's just giving me credit.
Yeah.
So I'll come up to the mic real quick. And the video, I believe that's going to be, I guess what Mr. Thompson's going to share in more K through 12 fashion is interviews from our elementary robotics members this afternoon. I pulled them away from doing what they love and I think you'll be able to hear some of the background clatter and so on, but ask them a little bit about what they like about coding and robotics in general. And then I will just, to give you some context, we started this three years ago with one session and we kind of had to pull teeth to get kids involved. We had three really eager kids, but for the most part I had to do a little persuading. And this year we actually capped out. We have three sessions, all have been full and have had a waitlist. So it's definitely a growing program and one that feeds a lot of, a lot of the stuff that Mr. Thompson directs. So enjoy.
I am doing robotics in fifth grade.
All right, and how long have you been in robotics?
Three years.
Okay. And what do you like about it?
I like, like the robots and how there's like so many things you can do with that. Like you can attach catapults to the back of that and you can run a drone. I also like how you can actually use them with, that'll make the ice there.
Great.
I'm going to start that. That's a dog. Oh, yeah.
That's the ice.
I'm going to explore an identical technology around in the, we are the one finding a tech folder on the, everything I see going, there will be lots of computers then we just end up and for the most, lots of computers.
I like that we, we don't have to just do all the talking, we can get into the show.
Wow.
But I, I like working because it looks good, it's fun to look around. I like seeing the challenge cards.
Okay, you are enjoying the challenge cards? Did you get a few of those today? All right, awesome.
This is probably egg house and, and it has a, a big program stash. It's like, it's.
Look at that, very nice. There it is, there you go, very good. Good job.
I love just.
Awesome. You read, could you please tell me what you like about robotics?
My name is Cici. I'm a, I'm a, for the game. And why it gives me a chance to, big, um, big, I don't usually think about, it's fantastic. My friends do it. I'm scared to run away from.
All right, so what's in your code there?
Well, it's dashy dog. It says, oh, and then it turns 182 degrees right and goes forward 170 meters really fast.
Whoa.
So let me grab this over here. CTSB folks can hear me. So I'm going to just piggyback on that. So Charles mentioned that, that helps feed our middle school and high school robotics and our innovation pathway programs. So I want to show you, just talking about that. So we have robotics wise at the middle school level, high school level. High school team just went to a little competition in Worcester this past weekend, did fairly well. Middle school's going to Framingham on Saturday and then our drone program is going, there's a competition much closer in Winstead thankfully on February 10th, so they're going to be headed there. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a post COVID void as everyone seems to think on these things, the way these happen. So we don't have any juniors or seniors in the program. We lost a couple of years with, with some momentum, but so Charles mentioned, you know, full at the third, fourth, and fifth grade level, we have like four, over 40 kids signed up for robotics. We have 16 kids doing robotics in the middle school and three in the high school. So we have 19 kids doing middle school, high school robotics. They meet at the same time together two or three times a week, depending on the week, all working together. So I can show you what that image is all about. So their competition this year is this field here. And if you went into our makerspace room, you would see this field here. These are tri balls right here that they have to pick up and move around, slide around, stuff like that. And then there's these pipes here at the end that they have to either go over or go under and they can hang the robot on at the end for extra points. So where does this cross over? Well, in innovation pathways, we offer this as a class. So kids are taking it after school, the middle school, and in high school they can take it after school, but they can also take it as a class. So the high school kids can really dive into this deeper than the middle schoolers can. They just get a lot more time on it. So I can show you a quick clip from last Saturday. So this is Sophie Delmasno, this is Ben Vella, and that's Nico Bruno. So Nico, eighth grader, but they brought him up to the high school because they needed someone to drive. And so they've been working all semester on this flipping mechanism. So in this game, this is the most hand loading they've ever allowed. So you can actually reach into your robot, hand load this thing and what you want to do is they're a red robot and their red net is over here. So they want to get these over here as far as they can. So they've been working on this flipping mechanism for most of the first semester. You can see here, as long as they're touching this red bar, they're good to flip. And they got pretty good at it after a while. Here comes the next basket.
Here comes the big basket.
So Nico was going off to defend the goal a little bit more. He'll be back in a little bit to do some more. So I can show you, here's some middle school. This is a middle school robot just in practice. Again, they're going to competition on Saturday, but you get a sense of what they're building and what they're doing with it. So this robot here is picking up that tri ball. It's going to spin it around and again, there's a, there's a big sort of soccer net here. You're going under the net, not in it or on top of it, but they'll work on dumping this out and using this plow in the front to, to push it in. And finally, I'll show you the, this is a middle school team. These are all seventh graders that built this robot. This is better than any high school team we saw on Saturday. So we're hopeful that this Saturday, if they can do this, there's a big bonus point at the end, so.
Wow.
So that's what's going on in the middle school and high school. And I will show you, so just a general innovation pathway program. I'm going to show you this right here. We do have a new toy that the, oh, it's upside down. Doesn't really matter for the, for the video purposes. This is a Glowforge laser cutter. So I'm going to ask these guys to take a look at those. We have a aerospace engineering class in the innovation pathway right now that is competing in the American Rocketry Challenge. So they have to build a rocket that gets an egg to 820 feet and back down in 45 seconds uncracked. So this year with this new laser cutter, they are, they designed their fins in Fusion 360, exported them to the laser cutter. So it takes them, you know, for these guys at this point in time with 3D design, this shape is pretty basic. Takes them maybe five minutes to make this shape and it takes the machine all of like three minutes to cut them all out. So very fast. If you want to smell the wood, you can, it's still burning from earlier today.
Yeah.
It'll take them far longer to take that and sand it by hand because they're going to want to round those fins off for aerodynamics. But that's what's going on. So you see two different designs there. One kid is designing more of a trapezoidal fin. One kid is designing what they would call a clip to delta, which is flat around the back. And we talked a little bit about center pressure, center of gravity, where's the mass in the rocket, where's the center of pressure is where's the air pressure. The more the fins are back, the more pressure there is on, more pressure back, more gravity front is better. So that's that. I can show you, this is the rocket as it's mocked up in a 3D design program. So this is what they're ultimately going for. And that's that. I can show you quickly, they have, the students, one of the students so far has done this, others will. This is a little satellite board. They had to solder. The antenna is very specific to where you need to cut, 91 centimeters specifically. The board is soldered. This is a humidity and temperature sensor. This is the power over here. Eventually this will come off and solar, a solar array will go on, like a solar panel that is the size of this on the backside. And what that's going to do is we have, this is that sensor right now. It's sitting in our makerspace. It is on the internet. It is giving you its voltage, the temperature in Celsius and the humidity. Ultimately, this is, this is from, through a startup called Ambisat out of the UK in combination with the European Space Agency. Eventually we are going to send this back to them and it's going to go on this rocket launcher right here. It was scheduled for 2024, but now it's been backed up to 2025. So eventually that little satellite you saw, that little chip is going to go into space. And when, once it goes into space, we will get telemetry on its trajectory. It's going to go into basically a polar orbit. So over the north pole, over the south pole, 16 times a day, it's going to go around the earth. When it goes on the backside of the earth away from the sun, telemetry will go away. When it comes back around and comes back into the sun, telemetry will come back. You'll see its position, the ground station that it's communicating with, you'll get, you'll get speed and trajectory and all that kind of stuff. It goes around for 30 days and then eventually its orbit decays, it falls into the, into the atmosphere and burns up, but it'll be a glorious time. So kids are pretty excited about that. Hopefully, you know, quarter to 2025 is realistic. We'll have to see, but we're going to keep an eye on that. Basically what you're looking at is, you're looking at that going around the earth at about 300 kilometers of altitude and so you will still get temperature and humidity readings as the atmosphere goes to about 10,000 kilometers. So that should be, that is our hope anyway. We will have some of these that we'll build not for launch, but we'll actually, we'll put the solar panels on, we'll go outside and get telemetry from the sun and take it around South County probably, see how, see how far we can keep connected to the, to the gateway that is here at the school. I mentioned drones real quick. I'll just show you, this is the drone team, mostly middle schoolers, one high schooler. This is them practicing in the cafeteria. So again, there's competition on February 10th. You got to go through those hoops. You got to go through the archways, things like that. And finally, not to drag it on any longer, also in the innovation pathway, we have three high schoolers taking a course in AI and they are starting, I'll give you this picture first. They are starting with this little car here. This little car is basically a Raspberry Pi. It's got a camera, it's got some sensors, accelerometer. What they're going to do with that is learn about some of these concepts in machine learning, mapping, navigation, machine vision, machine learning, learning a little bit of Python and how self-driving cars make decisions. And they're going to, this little map here, this is about an eight foot by four foot little town that it'll be driving around in. That is also in the makerspace now. So we will bring that back to you guys at some point in time, once we have that driving around and making its own decisions. At some point in time, they will have a Google Meet call, actually, I can't call it Zoom. It'll be a Google Meet with Sammy Schwartz, class of 2012, who programs autonomous cars for Waymo as a subsidiary of the Google Alphabet Company. So they're going to talk to her about how that all really works in the real world. And that's innovation pathway at this moment in time.
I will, before I say anything, I will accept questions from others. Carl?
Chris, that, that meet?
Yep.
On February 10th, which is a week from this Saturday?
Yep.
In Winstead?
Yep.
Do you, do you have any details, time, the venue in Winstead?
It's the Pearson Middle School in Winstead and they want to get going probably by nine, 9:00 AM. It'll probably run most of the day from nine to two or three.
And public is.
Public is certainly welcome. Yep, yep. Nice short trip down 44, you're welcome to come and watch.
At the po of that, that was one of my questions. Can you send us the info?
I can, yep. We also do a weekly emails that you get, right? If you scroll down to those dates and so on, you can get those.
Oh, in, in your weekly messages? Oh, great.
Yeah, so we have 11 kids doing drones this year. Last year we had the four that went to West Virginia. This year it's 11 and we've broken them up into four teams. So they're, they'll be, there will be certainly, there's probably like 40 teams at this event in Winstead, so there'll be times when they're going to be, this year the drone competition's a little different. Last year they had two drones against two drones and they thought there was too much crashing around. It's, it's only two drones at a time now and you're working together, not against each other. So it'll, there'll never be a chance for against each other per se, but we will be on a leaderboard, you know, ranking against each other as well as the other 36 teams that will be there.
You want to follow up?
One more. Is there still, you and I were at the world championship in St. Louis.
Yep, yep.
How long ago? 10 years ago at least?
It was 2015, so yeah, nine, nine years ago, yeah.
Is, does that still exist?
It does. What we, we have transitioned from First Tech Challenge to Vex Robotics. Vex Robotics is, has become much more popular than First Tech Challenge. I'd say when we won the state championship those three years in a row and First Tech Challenge, there was maybe 80 or 85 schools doing it at that time. Vex is far more, far more popular and competitive. It's all, it's not done by state level, it's done by regional, so it's a Southern New England championship and there's probably about 500 schools or 500 teams. A lot of schools have multiple teams. We're, we're putting out five middle school teams and one high school team. So 500 teams or so, so to, but we're hopeful, we're hopeful that we'll get back to the Southern New England championship. We were there in 2020 and then it got canceled with COVID and then they, sort of a couple of years later, they didn't, you know, they didn't really have it the following year and stuff. So now we're trying to get back there. But I think our, our middle school team that can hang there after what we saw at the high school event last week, there is a middle school version as well. So the middle, I'm hopeful this middle school team could possibly do really well on Saturday, qualify for the Southern New England championship and that could be an avenue towards the world championship. The Vex World Championship is in Dallas though, it's, that's where their headquarters are. So we'll see.
It was, I just have to make a comment. It was, I'm sure you were amazed at, at the level, the camaraderie between students who are actually competing against each other, but how they helped each other out when they had a problem with their robots or what, or any other problem. It, and I have very vivid memories of specific seemingly unimportant moments in that.
I always remember going back to the pit, you had, you were talking to Ben Webb and he goes, well, we had a motor burnout in that round, that's why I didn't go so well. And you're like, oh no, what are you going to do? And he was like, I already changed it out. I guess, you did? I don't know if you remember that. But yeah, so yeah, there is still a world championship. Hopefully we'll get back there someday.
David, go ahead.
Regarding the AI self-driving project, are there any other AI projects in the pipeline? Are you going to be delving into other kinds of AI such as large language models?
Yes. The idea with that class is the self-driving car is basically, it's, it's a semester course, starting in second semester. We'll probably run that for like the third quarter and then the fourth quarter they'll get into other, other things like language models and things like that where they'll start to, you know, what we're going to do is probably have two, two paths there is my concept is that not every kid wants to code AI, but every kid's going to use AI. So we'll have a coder path for that kid that really wants to get under the hood and see how AI is working. And then we'll also offer another path with a kid who really just wants to use AI to better their life, make things, you know, quicker and better for themselves, to maximize their capability in using it. So we'll have an end user experience and a developer experience.
Other questions?
I would like, I would like to put in for a self-driving car for the superintendent. Is that, is that something that we could think about and SBRSD?
I'll have to see.
All right, thank you.
Michelle?
That satellite ship, are we going to be able to track it like?
That dashboard I showed you, it's online. Yep. Yep.
So are you going to like eventually put it on a link on the website?
Yep, yep. Like I said, now they're, now they're talking, you know, mid 2025, so it's over a year away, but the kids were hoping, again, they just changed that, so I don't know. You know how those things go. NASA pushes back launches or SpaceX or whatever, so we'll have to see.
And other, all right, in that case, me, first the college counselor in me, don't look at your watch. Do the students who are involved and the parents have a picture of a trajectory here while at SBRSD and then in terms of selecting colleges, career pathways, et cetera?
Meaning like where would like the robotics program take them?
Well, with all these different programs, I'm not there. So I'm asking when I'm hearing it, I don't know, you know, very often when you speak about a career pathway?
Yeah.
You look at a number of courses, I don't know if they're in your head or it's a matter of the students and their parents understand the various options moving ahead.
Yeah, I think that you, you know, every kid is, is a little different, obviously. You know, some kids are taking robotics just for the fun of it and some kids want to make a career out of it or something in tech, the tech field. So we certainly have those conversations. Again, we haven't had a couple, it's been a couple of years since we've had major graduates, you know, we haven't, like a COVID void, so, but that class of 2022 had a lot of tech kids in it, you know, some of them have gone on to major in cybersecurity and computer science and things of that nature. So we have those conversations, lots of, lots of scholarships available for kids that do robotics teams and that kind of stuff. You know, getting, going back to Sammy Schwartz and going to WPI, I don't think she paid a dime for WPI, so.
And you inform the students?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yep, yep. So, but even, even, I mean, some students we look at, you know, will, will say, you know, yeah, there's, there's WPI, there's RPI. I mean, BCC has a great program and this whole Mechatronics now, this wonderful spot there's, there's WPI, there's RPI. I mean, BCC has a great program, and this whole Mechatronics now, this wonderful spot for a lot of kids that can take advantage of that program. Yeah, we have, we have those conversations.
Well, I love
It's in the program of studies as well. Just so, I mean, you can see that pathway, too. So they, families do know what I'm trying to say.
Okay, got it. It's, I loved seeing Jeff Blauwren's oldest is still involved because she came home. I remember Jeff telling us when he was on the school community, she came home, I think it was in second grade, and was like, this is her field, you know, she's so, and here she is, like now in fourth grade, totally involved. And clearly, you have so many young women, young girls
Yep.
involved. It's, it's wonderful to see. Do we have any connections at all with State University at Albany? Because they
Um, not at the moment, no.
Incredible.
Yeah.
If you want me to make a connection.
Sure.
I will. Jim Hendler, who's like, doesn't speak English, he speaks totally AI and everything else. I know since I was his, like, elementary school teacher. So I will make, happy to follow up. This is great, Chris. And I think it's time for us to have an article again. I think the last time we had a coverage was your underwater. No, you had also the drones. But I think we do.
Yeah, the, once, well, once the kids go to competitions and stuff, maybe we can have them back in and show you what they, what they accomplished and get a closer look at what they've done.
Yeah, and also the same way, we're going to do in our local papers, the Warm Line. I think it would be wonderful to have an article that we can each adapt to our own communities. February 15th is my deadline for the Sheffield Times. I don't know what other people have. So maybe we could put together something to be able to get those articles in, into our local papers.
Sure.
Love it. Thank you. And my last question always goes to funding. How are you providing for all of us? I mean, we're not selling light bulbs anymore.
Innovation Pathway.
Oh, wow. So I'll have to buy 100 light bulbs.
You don't, no.
I mean, if you want to.
If I want to, great. Thank you so much. Nancy's awesome, covers it all. All right, let's see. Do we have any public comment? As we have some people out in the public world. Anyone? No hands? Nope. In that case, let's move on to the business manager's report. Sir?
Everyone, in front of you, in your packet, you have a number of warrants, payroll warrants, as well as vendor warrants that span a couple of months' time, you know, for your review and ultimately your approval. This, you know, these next few months are very busy months in the world of business management. As you know, it's budget season, and we've been working very closely with, with Beth, as well as the building leaders, the curriculum leaders and whatnot, in terms of getting the budget process that, you know, entails a lot of work in detail and communication and all that stuff. So, you know, like I said, we're, we met this past week with, I think it was the Finance Committee to review our capital articles. There are capital items that we're working on, as well as that we're proposing for FY '25. And I'm sure that we'll be talking more so in the coming months around budget.
Move to approve the warrants.
Do we have a second on that? Thank you. That was Nancy?
Yep.
Okay. All right, any questions? Okay. All right, with that, I'll take a vote. Kyle?
Yes.
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 And yes, unanimous.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Kim is now here. I hope you're feeling somewhat better. Kim?
Hold on, she's gonna unmute.
She passed out.
I hope not.
Kim? She's on silent, I think. It looks like there is a cross. Ah, there she goes. We're, we're just asking if you're voting yes on the warrant. Thank you. Not sounding, all right, it's unanimous. Thank you.
No grants, a gift, no transfers, right? Okay.
Okay. All right, with that, any business with district member towns that we're aware of?
Nothing. Yeah.
Okay, chairman's report. I have not heard anything back in terms of, Carl had made a very good point at our last meeting about when funding is public, you know, everything with the Regional Planning Board, that to completely cut off and, and have all the information disappear, as of today, that there is a question about that. So I've been following up to try to find out what, what they've actually done, if they canceled everything, dropped it.
Can I, yeah, if you're, I just have a question. Are we talking about retention of the, all the, all the records?
Yes.
For the three-plus years
Exactly.
Of, of the planning board?
Exactly.
And is there a question in your mind or in anyone's mind whether or not those documents are going to be retained? I think they have to be.
Well, they were not planning on, on doing that. They, the statement was, if we wanted to retain any of it, it was up to us to do it. And you made the point of government funding, they had grants, et cetera, that there, it was incumbent upon them not to have everything disappear.
I, I, as I, I think I said it when that came up the last time, I think it would be a violation of law for the, because all of those documents are subject to discovery under the
Good point.
Public, Public Records Act. And just as the school committee, or any school committee, or any planning board of a town can't destroy documents, I don't think they can destroy them. It also seems pointless that they would destroy them.
It's not destroying. It's, in a way, it is, because it's completely eliminating anybody's ability to access it by no longer standing behind or
Yeah. I can't imagine that that isn't contrary to Commonwealth law.
Well, I've been following up, so.
Okay, good, yeah.
I will continue to. The other thing, which I, I mentioned in passing, one of the things we had agreed to is we're going to try to get more and more of the information of these things of that especially like this career pathway or the Warm Line or others as additional features in our local newsletters in addition to, in addition to Beth's updating all of our communities with her letter from the superintendent. So with our, my major goal for us is, and we discussed this in our communication and in our evaluation, is that we work on communication with our communities. One of the issues we faced is that we had a number of people who, several people who came on almost as, you know, last-minute write-ins to be on the school committee. So the complaint that had, it came up after the last so-called election is that people don't know they're school committee members. So we want to address that. Also, for those people who will be up for election, you know, in '24, if you're not planning on running, you should hopefully be going ahead and trying to get somebody to run in, in your community, because we will have those several open seats. And if we have anybody, you know, if you want me to speak to anybody, where you have someone who's possibly interested in running,
Bless you.
Running, bless you for a seat, please, you know, let us put the full court press on. And as I said the last time, it would be great, nothing against us old farts, but it's really nice when a parent could speak up, like the last time you did validating what was going on in math. Or Kim spoke about her, her daughter's experience. We get more parents on. It's really important. And basically, that is it. I'm turning it over to the superintendent.
Excellent. So I just wanted to highlight, we put in all the school committee folders a copy of the student published Bold Eagle, which is completely done by the students. Yes, so there is fabulous art and articles. You can read your horoscope, which I was told to do today, and I haven't done it yet. But they're incredibly proud of it. They did a beautiful job, and I wanted you all to have it so that you could experience it the old-fashioned way. It was posted out online and published that way, so I wanted you to have that. Today also was the due date to file the FY '24 Rural Aid Survey, which I got in right under the wire prior to 5:00 today. We received in FY '23, $101,000 after not qualifying for any for a lot of years. FY '24, that went up significantly to $254,000. So that's about a quarter of the way to where we would be fully funded, according to the Rural Aid Report that was written. So there's still some work to do on advocacy, but it's going in the right direction. I am excited to say that we are reinvigorating my superintendent roundtable meetings, which are between the school committee, the select board members, or finance committee members that we were doing for quite a while. And we have picked February 20th at 5:30 PM. So I'll be putting together an agenda and sending that out. But I wanted to let everybody know that was based on Michelle sending out a request and several available dates, so. And it's gonna be both in-person and Zoom options, so trying to get as many people to, to share as possible. I like to give little budget nuggets as we have them. I've been putting any budget updates that I know of in my Monday messages, and there'll be a quiz to see how many of you read my Monday notes. I'm just kidding. But some things that I didn't talk about were the governor's budget report, which was done last week. So for us, as, as Jonathan mentioned, we did do our capital portion of the budget at our first finance committee meeting on Tuesday. And our next, we kind of build the budget in stages. So our next finance committee meeting is on February 8th, and we'll just be talking about the operational expenditures. So that'll be mostly the administrators presenting that piece. But I will kind of keep highlighting the, some of the overarching elements of the budget. For instance, Chapter 70, our Chapter 70 funding, we're in the hold harmless, so we get $30 per student based on our foundation enrollment, which is different than our enrollment that you're seeing, because that is our current, to the minute, enrollment. Theirs is based on an October 1 figure. So our $30, based on 626 students, which is what the, the state has in for our foundation enrollment, gives us an increase in Chapter 70 aid of $18,000, roughly, almost $19,000. So you can see that's not really bringing it home. But anyway, so we're in the same boat as 212 other districts who are receiving that minimum aid. Regional transportation reimbursement is gonna be in the 80% right now. So most districts are experiencing a, you know, less than ideal. We, we were up around 90% at the end of last year. So right now, it's, it's hovering at the 80% mark of our costs. So we'll be looking at that. The inflation factor, I think, is always super important, because it, that's part of that big funding formula. And this, it's capped in the, by statute at 4.5%, and you know inflation's been at seven, eight, nine. It's been really up there. So this year, we're, we're gonna be having it capped at 1.35%, so that's also kind of a big issue as we calculate that funding formula. And they did fully fund the universal free school lunch, which is very important and something that we're all very grateful for. So those are just a couple of highlights on where we are with the state budget. Again, the governor's budget is always, is usually the most generous, and then they do some work from there. We haven't heard anything on Rural Aid or some, you know, there are some other small parts. But I'll keep updating people as more information comes in, and when it comes time for advocacy, I'll be reaching out and asking for, for the committee to help, help us with that advocacy work. So that's all I have for right now.
Thank you. All right.
I have, I have a question
Yes.
For the superintendent.
Sure.
So the transportation reimbursement is going to be approximately 80% of the actual cost of transportation?
Of the prior years?
Of the prior year.
Transportation costs that are eligible, eligible transportation costs, like special ed costs are not eligible for reimbursement.
So what is excluded from, from, what is not eligible, other than specials?
Nothing. But I'm saying, you, you know, and, and anybody who's a mile and a half, I mean, technically, you're supposed to remove.
So does that mean that we are going to have a serious budget issue in making up that additional 10%?
I, I don't know yet. We have to do quite a calculation to figure that out. I believe, because our costs are significant with our transportation and have gone up in the last couple of years, that even though we're getting less of a reimbursement right now, and again, this is the first out of five to six iterations. So usually, there's a ton of advocacy for that number to head closer to 100%. Right now, they're saying be conservative and hold at 80%. But our costs are high, so I think it will be, it's projected at a decrease right now, but I don't know how big of a decrease. So we'll, we'll give you actual numbers in a week or two.
When you say a decrease, a decrease in, in our transportation costs from last year?
No, our transportation costs are up, but the reimbursement rate's down. So I don't, so it's going to be a decrease, but not maybe as bad, because our costs were higher, if that makes any sense. It's a very complex formula.
Uh huh. And that, we're not fixed at 80% now. That is, that's not a final reimbursement.
No, it's our first shot at it. So that's why I'm saying, it's just, right now, that's where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions, the superintendent? Yes, David?
You said, when you were answering Mr. Stewart's question, that, that it was 80, was currently running at 80% of last year's costs. So that means we're, what, probably about seven, 65, 70% of our current costs, given inflation?
I, I have to, I have to really look at it, because like I said, I have to pull out those students who are, who are less than, like, there's this huge calculation that has to be done. So probably close. I think, I think our costs went up significantly. Like, remember, we have like a 38% increase in our regional transportation over these three years? So, so, so that piece will be an increase, and then we'll, we'll deduct based on ridership, where they're located. And then we'll, we'll deduct based on ridership, where they're located, and the, the percentage that we've received. So, and then, you know, what's considered special education costs versus regular ed costs. So the formula's complex. I don't really want to guess at it. But I don't think, I think we're down, but we're not down a ton. But I'll give you an actual number.
Okay. Any other questions for the superintendent? All right. Thank you so much. Do we have anything from Julie?
We do not today.
We move on then to Sandy Hubbard.
Good evening. Have a few things to share with you. One is save the date for May 1st will be the Special Olympics. It's always the first Wednesday of May. We just received notification recently that it will be that date. So keep that in mind. It is always held because it's somewhat central, more central anyway, at Berkshire Hills. Recently, we put out a posting for summer program, which will run for July, from July 1st to August 1st. So that is out. We're planning for that. Pre-K and kindergarten registration, the public communication and information will be out next week. The early childhood department will be meeting on February 7 to go over the registration process and the screening process and discussing our projected enrollment in the census because we now have our census information. And we're going over who we know is already enrolled versus who we can anticipate. And we're reaching out to families. I wanted to share with you that we recently received our Department of Elementary and Secondary Education accountability levels and on January 25th, which looks at student performance and compliance in eight areas. There's points assigned to each area, which affect the district's overall determination level. And we received 34 out of 34 points, so 100%, which is terrific. And that means we're meeting all requirements, which is the highest level we can receive. So that was, that was good news. Just means we're, we're doing what we need to do to remain compliant and looking at our overall student performance. At the next meeting, I do plan to share with you, I like how Beth was sharing with you some of the reimbursements that we get from the state. And I'll be sharing the special education perspective next time. Also complicated formulas, but I'll share with you the information I have. Circuit breaker being one of them. And I'm currently in the process of looking at our information for this year to see if we will qualify for extraordinary relief, which is something that they offer every year. And there's actually another additional component they're, they're offering this year that I'm taking a look at to see if our special education costs and qualifying costs do meet the level of us qualifying. So I will keep, I will report on that more in more detail on February 12. So thank you.
Any questions for Sandy? Carl?
Sandy, I, I've become, I've, I've actually been interested in, for a while, in the effects of cellphone usage in schools. But not only in schools, I mean adults also, there've been links to, links to dementia in adults. And I, and then I reviewed the policies in, in the Commonwealth in general and Berkshire County specifically. And there are a number of districts in Berkshire County that have banned the use of cellphones. Sometimes only in middle school. Some school districts require students to put their phones at the beginning of the school day in pouches that are made by a company called Yonver, which is Y-O-N-V-E-R. Pittsfield is among those, Lee, Lennox for the middle school, Central Berkshire, and Dalton. A few others, Berkshire Hills. Now, and I looked at our, this is a long-winded question. And I, and I apologize for its long-windedness, but I, I'm, I'm known for that, for long-winded, bit, long-windedness in almost every aspect of, of my, of my life. But I looked at our policy manual and our policy, no, sorry, not policy manual, our student handbook, which does not allow cellphones in the elementary school. But it says no, correct? Yeah.
That's true.
But it says nothing about, I think, and I, correct me if I'm wrong. But I don't think it says anything about
That's what it says in the, yes, it does say that.
About middle school or high school. I'm sure that the superintendent has been involved in discussions with this, and, and you have.
Well, I think administration in general has a discussion. I don't know if you want to talk about middle school as trying some things as well?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've tried some in recent middle school, like collecting them at the beginning of the day and giving them back before they go to lunch. So the kids don't have it during the academic day.
So they can, so, so it can, they can use their phones during lunch and then return them to?
No, like what we've been doing is they get it back when they go to lunch. And then after lunch, they really only have three periods. So they still have their phone then. High school wise, for a long time, we've used the policy of class to class because some classes have allowed students to use it rather than a computer for certain things. And then, you know, a lot of the classrooms have the, like, clear shoe rack. It's like a clear shoe rack. So kids have put the phone in the shoe rack, like if that's a class, they're not allowed to use it. You know, we've had some conversations recently everywhere, from faculty meetings to school council meetings about, is this the time to revisit that? And, you know, start having conversations about, do we want to do something else?
Well, I, I for one am pleased to hear that. So it's a continuing conversation that the administration is having. And it's, and it's a continuing concern. Is that a fair characterization?
Without, without question. And it's come up, I would say, over the last two years. Again, because I think we're all concerned about the amount of time, you know, students spend on that, on their devices.
Yeah. I, I was shocked to, shocked, shocked, maybe a little bit too strong, but the percentage of public schools in the country that have restricted in some way, either completely or partially, the use of cellphones, the percentage is 80%.
I was surprised. I am surprised at that.
Yeah.
There also was an incentive in Massachusetts by the commissioner. There were districts who took advantage or, I think, are doing something because there was, I believe he gave like a $10,000 grant to study the effect, you know, of, or create some kind of policy. And so that's what some of those districts who bought those pouches, you know, are, are experimenting with different ways to do that. So I think we've been systematically working through that on our own. But some districts, maybe larger cities, took advantage of that.
Well, I mean, I just want to say that I'm pleased to hear that it's a matter of continuing interest by the administration and that it isn't, that, that, that you are watching and working on approaches to that. Good. Thanks.
I'd like to just follow up on that. Among the three of you, what do you see as the major negative impact of having the students having their cellphones? Is it interfering with academic learning? Is it exacerbating social media? What, what are the issues that you, when you have your meetings?
100%. I think mental health and the concerns around the amount of time and that students spend on social media and how that directly impacts their own self-esteem and, and other issues that cause all sorts of challenges. And the other piece around that I think everybody is struggling with nationally is, you know, where are the lines drawn, right? It happens outside on social media. How are you tracing that when it gets into school? How are you following up on that, the amount of time? It's just, I mean, as an adult, it can be very annoying, right? So I mean, you know what it's like if, if there's a social media attack, not that I've had any recently. But, you know, I, I think that's just in general. And you know how it is, as an adult, it can be incredibly painful. So think about that in, with students. And so I think, I think everybody's very concerned about that and thinking about how to support it, how to deal with all of those issues. So, you know, ongoing conversations, I think that's why they're studying it. And they've put some money towards it at the state level. And I fully expect that, you know, these will be ongoing conversations and maybe generate, end up with some kind of policy requirements going forward.
And in that whole program that you have where there are, I'm not going to call it the right name, where you have sessions when students are
Oh, the superintendent's advisory council?
No, no, no. On every day, they have a period of time.
Oh, like an advisory or a, or a responsive classroom?
Right. So is this a, a topic that is discussed on a regular basis in any of, in the classes?
I mean, I'm, I think the, the middle and high, well, middle has a different program, but high school specifically, right? A lot of times, they're generating what they talk about based on what comes out, you know, what kids are bringing up as, as issues. So, you know, I think it will be something that can be discussed by kids in, in groups. I, I would imagine student government talks about it. I would imagine there's opportunities for that. But I think we're going to be all talking about it more intentionally because we, we have concerns.
Carl, thank you so much for bringing the topic up because it's, yeah, a real
We're watching too.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis.
Could I just make a comment on this? I've also, and Carl, have read a lot about this subject of, of cellphones in school. And, and one of the things that appears to me that's going on in the rest of the world, but not necessarily among us, is that, that the teachers are, have been put in control in a lot of cases, a growing percentage of cases, of basically figuring out whether they will allow them to be used in the class. And what seems to be the common thread that I continue to, to see in the papers and here on the news is that in a lot of the schools these days, basically what they're doing is the individual teacher hangs up something and the kids basically are required to put their phones in there if that's what the teacher wants. So it, it appears to have become more of a teacher-led than a superintendent-led or a school committee-led type of plan that people are, are starting to pretty much head down the road in. That, that they basically have, have started to say, okay, it's, it's your classroom, so you have to make the decision on whether you want to put the blanket up outside that, and have all your kids come in and put their phones in there, you know, to, 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 you know, so that, so that in effect, they can't use them during your class period or not, you know? And, and that seems to be a fairly common thread that seems to be existing in, I don't know whether it's in the world's environment, but, but in the USA, that, that seems to be a current kind of threat where people are really heading that way. And I'm just kind of curious about, is that something that we should have a, a deeper discussion on? And perhaps do a similar thing or, or not, you know?
I mean, my reaction would be that really comes under the superintendent and the principals to handle that issue and the whole team to handle that issue. And if necessary, turn to us where it might affect policy. David?
I had a question and something to say to your point, Dennis. With regard to technology, some classrooms are good, some is questionable. Are the students issued some form of computational technology that can do the work that the classes that allow it do on their cellphones? Like a laptop or a tablet or something?
Yes.
Okay. So then they have a device they could use to do the things they would be doing in school on their cellphones?
Mm-hmm. They do.
Okay.
But, you know, I think there are some teachers who find, you know, who are interested in actually allowing that device for a specific scientific, you know? So there, there are multiple ways that they could do it. And I think some teachers believe that they want to give them the opportunity to use whatever medium works for them in a very structured setting of, you know, science, let's just say. But that doesn't mean they have graphing calc, you know, we pay for all those other pieces of technology too, so they do have them. So I don't think that's as widespread. And I think they would be doing something, like sometimes there's polling devices, right? You can do different kinds of polls based off phones that you can see a reaction, right, in the classroom to survey kids about what they're learning or. So there's, there's different things that they could do with it and then have it be off and away, you know? So I think there is some autonomy to that. But overall, I think we want to examine just that free time of looking at social media when you should be focused on, you know, academic time. So they are having those discussions and they are having them at the teacher level and the administrative level. And we'll probably think about what recommendations they'd want to make going forward, if any, in the, in the student handbook.
Okay. Oh, you wanted to say something, Dennis?
To, to your point about the, the teachers kind of figuring that out as they go, I think we should collect some input from the teachers and the administration and define a policy that specifically defines what the committee's expectations are on that front and any relevant responsibilities and, or, you know? I think we should define a policy on that topic with input from, you know, the school.
Okay. All right. Moving on, we have some lateral movements to approve under new business. And if you look at page 12A, and I'll take a motion.
So moved.
And we have a second there with Jim, saying any discussion?
Why the move? Why are we moving these people?
This is, so they follow a process, they earned credits, and then they move on the salary schedule based on that. They follow a rigorous process. And, you know, we've gone through all their paperwork, ensured that they have met those requirements, but it requires you to approve that move.
So in what, what ways laterally? Are they receiving a pay change?
Yes, because they're moving from a master's Step 9 column to a master's 18 column.
I see.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, seen Dennis, I'll start with you. We're voting.
Aye.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. We have one. And Kim, are you okay?
Yep.
Is that a yes?
No.
What?
No.
Okay. So we have one no and yes, therefore it's approved. They move along, having accomplished what they needed to do in order to be moved contractually. All right. Unfinished business, I'm going to turn that over to our superintendent.
There, there could be various people who might present at this time. I'll talk a little bit about Transcend. Mr. Carpenter will talk a little bit about Early College. Mr. Thompson already talked about innovation pathways. So Transcend, on our Transcend grant, the core team met today. We are in the phase where we're starting to really synthesize all the information we got from our community group, our students, the faculty and staff, around the proposal after our community conversation on the work that we're doing on the, on the Transcend grant, determining more specifically what we're going to pilot, which the core team is getting ready because we do our second trip to work with the national teams at the end of the month. We'll be headed to Austin, Texas to do some more detailed work on this program. We did set our next design team meeting, which I'll, I'll send out to, to everybody. But the design team will meet on March 12 at 6:00 PM. And the community team will be meeting on April 9 at 6:00 PM. And with details about what each group will be doing and what our next steps are. But it's getting really But it's getting really exciting and really real. Um, and as soon as we have, uh, more details and more information, we'll continue to share.
Um, may I ask you a question or should I wait till the others?
No, you can ask me a question.
Um, the, the question I have is a couple of people today, that's what happens when you go anywhere in town, were asked who had said they really wanted to be involved as community members.
That's what I was, that's what I was gonna bring up too, like the live work specifically.
So, can they still come on board?
Yep. So, as we had, we had a new member, um, who, there's a, um, right on the Transcend webpage, there's a way to sign up if you'd like to be involved in the community, um, group, on the community team. Um, and that comes in and Michelle adds them to, to the list. We haven't turned anybody away who, um, wants to, um, do that. Um, and-
And how would they catch up?
Yeah, I was gonna say, 'cause I was-
Wait, wait. We're not interrupting. Go ahead.
Um, so, what we're trying to do is keep the, I mean, besides the fact that I talk about it and every, um, Monday about what our next steps are and where we are, there's a ton of information and all of the agendas and prior information as to what we've been doing. There's videos, all that stuff we're trying to keep, um, on the webpage so that you can go back and look at the information. I think we even just talked about posting our last community conversation where we, um, did an update as to where we are. Um, so you can watch that and catch right up and all the documents that we present are there. So, anybody who wants to, and of course, we're always happy to, um, when we can, um, sit and catch someone up. But you can, um, other members of the community team or the design team have offered to do, um, small group meetings in their locations. So-
That's great.
Yeah, so-
Yeah, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, so one of the questions that came up was, um, how, how, um, what, 'cause the, uh, this happened to be an organization that did, did apply for community to be involved. And they were just wondering how to find out information about, I sent them to the website, but they were wondering if they were gonna be contacted or not for community, um, meetings and stuff.
If, if they sign up to be a member to participate in the community team, if they didn't do that, we won't contact them.
No, they did, they did sign up, but they didn't, they haven't seen anything, or that was the understanding.
No. So, any single per, anybody who's on the list has been added to the community team and has received an invitation.
I think it was the library, so maybe it come in and said, okay, I'll just-
Yeah. So, I don't know. But anyway, the, so if they haven't done that or just re-signed it and we'll get them on the list. We're happy to do that.
She was on. And she wrote in the chat that she'd be interested in helping. I remember that.
I'm not sure we're gonna get it that way, so-
Yeah, okay, that's, that, that's-
Okay, let's not cross.
Thanks, but I believe, I just recalled that.
All right.
That's easy.
All right. Who's following up next?
Uh, Mr. Carpenter will talk a little bit about early college.
Yeah, do you do a quick possible, could you do it for, so gets picked up if you don't mind?
So, just really quickly, um, in terms of, uh, early college for the second semester, um, we're excited because we have a few, uh, students who, uh, did not take, um, any early college classes in the first semester, who are now jumping on board in the second semester. Uh, really excited about the forensic science class, um, which, um, has, uh, I think 14 students now enrolled, um, because this is our first foray into, uh, getting on Simon's Rock's campus. So, um, because of the lab requirements, uh, that are needed in the class, um, tomorrow will be the first day that, uh, we send the students over to Simon's Rock, uh, to use the lab there. The kids are really excited about that opportunity. Um, and again, that's one of our goals in the, in our early college plan is to, you know, give students access to, um, some of the classes on their campus. Um, Simon's Rock has been very gracious about offering our kids the opportunity to go over there for some other classes. Um, and right now, we don't have a lot of kids getting involved because some of the times of those classes are tough if kids are involved in extracurricular activities. So, there are a couple, uh, music-related classes that are running like 6:30 to 8 o'clock at night, um, a couple of times a week. And so, um, you know, that really hasn't worked out yet, but we're excited for what could possibly happen as, as we move forward. But I think this is a nice first step to get those 14 students. Uh, Simon's Rock is, uh, gonna feed them lunch quick. Um, and we have an arrangement so that they can get back here, um, for a bus dismissal, which, um, will be really good. Um, but again, we got a, a lot of kids involved in, uh, the different offerings we have, um, for the second semester. Um, and then obviously, you know, with our juniors, um, being here next year, a lot of them are starting to look at, um, what are the offerings gonna be for next year? You know, we had quite a few kids who, um, took two or three or more classes this year. Because over some of those juniors, they're gonna be able to get close to the, uh, 30 credits that we've been talking about. So, um, that's really exciting. Yes?
Question. Um, have you done, uh, have you found out how the students did the first semester? Are their grades in for the first semester?
Sort of. So, you know, they still can, at Simon's Rock, uh, professors have the ability to make changes to grades up until February 5th. And so, um, we got sort of what the preliminary grades look like. Obviously, we have a much better idea with some of our faculty that are teaching. Um, and so overall, a lot of kids had a lot of success. So, we're, we're really happy about that. And for a lot of the kids, um, who have taken multiple classes, I, I was impressed that, that they were successful in, in two or sometimes three classes, uh, last semester, which, you know, was one of the things that we were always cautious about. Like, as kids started to, you know, double up or, or take three classes along with their other high school offerings, um, were they gonna be able to sort of manage that course load? And so, we were really happy with, um, with how those kids did who were taking two or three or more classes.
All right. So, my follow-up is, uh, do you have a place or some, where we could get actual student feedback on their experience? Where they could be giving us that-
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, usually at the end of the course, we've, we've given them sort of a, uh, I guess you could call it like an exit, exit survey, um, to try to get their ideas of, of, um, how it went and things like that. Um, so, yeah.
And, and who reviews those?
Wendy usually.
It's usually been, been Wendy who's looked that over. Um, and in a lot of cases, she's the one who's, um, gone to the class to, um, give the survey, so, yeah.
That's great. And then with that, um, then I assume you guys get together and discuss and see if there's anything that has to be, any adjustments?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I have, David first, then Carl.
Well, let me just help you, no, just let me round that-
Oh, you're not finished?
Round that out was just saying that we meet as, uh, you know, uh, those of us who've been working on there, we meet once a month with Simon's Rock administration and, and us. And we're always constantly looking at the program and seeing where we need to make adjustments.
I have multiple meetings with some of the professors that come on campus so that we can talk about students. And, you know, I think, um, in a short amount of time, we've sort of figured out, um, how to support each other in terms of if we have any student struggles, or things like that, you know? So, it's, uh, that piece has worked out really well. Um, which again, I know a lot of people are sort of nervous about if we had people outside of our faculty teaching the kids, what would that look like? So-
And what is the feedback that you've been getting from John Weinstein and others?
I, I mean, I think everybody's been really happy with how much we've accomplished in a short amount of time. And I think, um, I think for, I mean, I obviously don't wanna speak for, for anybody at Simon's Rock, but in terms of Ken and, and John, they've been really happy with the amount of offerings we've been able to have, um, the amount of success that their faculty has had coming down here. Um, and, and in a short amount of time, how many of our kids have sort of embraced the idea of, of sort of losing that anxiety of, of being in classes with faculty that they're not, that aren't connected to Mount Everett? Um, so I think that's gone really well. You know, it's, um, a, a, a lot of kids have liked the, the diversity in the classes. And so, you know, we've, this year, this semester, we're trying an art class. Um, and we've, we've done some things around the arts. And so, you know, this is a nice way to add a little more. We had a film class last year. Um, and then we're, uh, we're doing our first, um, in-house math class. We've had some faculty come over from Simon's Rock and do some math classes, but, you know, this is our first one here. So, that's kind of, uh, kind of exciting that we can, you know, offer a bunch of different subject areas.
David?
Those, uh, exit surveys you referred to, are they anonymous?
Um, I, I would have to ask Wendy if, if they're handing them in anonymously. You know, I mean, I, I have some knowledge because we've sort of done our own, uh, exit surveys with some of the kids, um, where we kinda sat them down and talked to them afterwards. Especially some of the kids who are really apprehensive to start and then had some success where we've asked them like, you know, that process of, you know, being successful after starting with, get me out of here. I don't think I can hack this, so. Um, but yeah, I'd have to ask her if, if the surveys that she's giving out are anonymous or not.
Jim? Oh, I thought your hand went up. No? Carl?
Yeah. Um, Jesse, let's say a hypothetical, uh, Mount Everett student, completes, completes the early college program and ends up with the 30 credits. Now, isn't it true, and, and that student applies to, let's say, Duke University? Isn't it within the discretion of the university whether or not to grant that student the 30 credits?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I can, I can speak to you just in my personal experience with my two kids who are in college. Um, my daughter goes to a school, um, that would have taken all 30 credits.
That would have?
Would have. Yeah, without question. Um, and then my son goes to a private school and I'm not sure they would have taken any, but it would have allowed him to avoid some of the, um, I don't wanna call them prerequisites because they don't really have them there, but some of the, um, entry-level, you know, math classes and things like that, um, hypothetically, he could have sort of jumped ahead. Um, I just don't know if they would have actually awarded him the credit. So, I think it, it goes university to university, college, university to college, university. But, you know, again, I think there's a benefit for everybody. You know, I think, you know, just in my home during breaks, uh, when my daughter who's in college, early college classes now, talks about her experience, my oldest kids say things like, I wish we could have done that because, you know, I mean, they've done fine in college, but just the expectation of, of what it was like in terms of, you know, syllabus and, and the deadlines and, you know, some of that, I think, you know, they wish they would have gotten the experience when they were here.
Yeah. Well, I, yes. And I did, I hope I didn't, wasn't, uh, wasn't, uh, it wasn't perceived that I was suggesting that these 30 credits could be meaningless. I mean, they, they, they are meaningful whether they're in fact award, they should be meaningful whether they're awarded 30 credits towards their degree in college or university or not. But it's still ultimately a decision to be made by the, the, uh, post-high school institution.
Yeah, without question. And I could just tell you that, that one of the things that I think we're seeing now too in some of it is, um, it was some graduate programs where they require some, some will require certain classes that, like some of the liberal arts schools, you might not have access to, uh, through the early college program. That might suffice what some of those schools are looking for. So, uh, you know, just talking to some of our kids recently who are interested in, in like physical therapy or being an athletic trainer, a lot of those schools require like an anatomy and physiology class. Well, you know, our kids could, used to take that here for high school credit. Uh, now we offer it as early college credit. So, uh, I talked to a recent graduate who was gonna take some, try to take the anatomy and physiology through BCC in the summer before his senior year. So, he gets what he needs for the next step. And my guess is most schools would have accepted that early college credit. So, even though it might not at a private university benefit them immediately, it could as they move on to graduate school. So, for us, right, this is all new. And so, we're finding this out basically as we talk to our graduates as they move forward in terms of like exactly what the impact was specifically. You know, we've had, Wendy has, has done a lot of reach out with colleges. And I know like, uh, as far as the Massachusetts State Colleges, they're almost all giving us the same answer that, um, most of those 30 credits are gonna be transferable. And so, private college to private college, the answer has been different. Um, but there are a lot of things that are pretty exciting about, um, some of the schools we've talked to have been really open to, hey, we'd probably give this, this, and this, which I think is, is pretty cool.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
I just wanna piggyback on that is speaking to Wendy exactly on this issue. She, I don't know if she's still gonna be able to do it, but she followed with every single student who had taken courses, spoke to the college that they were going to and walked through all of it. So, she was able to ensure that our students were either getting blanket credit to take the place of a prereq or an exact, uh, transfer of the subject. Because that was a concern, definitely. And it was a concern she had and has made that a definite follow-up. I'm sorry, Bev, if you wanted-
No, no. No, I'm just saying, I, I think the other thing is this is a huge state initiative um, that they, um, and they are also working with colleges, both public and state colleges to, and private, to be talking about, um, making it more accessible wherever. So, I think, um, we're gonna see more of that, but it is, yes, the, the institution's decision. But I think people are, or people, institutions are becoming more open to, um, thinking about making, uh, accepting credits more readily.
And I think it's interesting, when Nathan Tenberg spoke at, at Agrimont's um, on the issue of the merger, one of the things, a question came up about early college. And he spoke to the fact of how he had to learn that no one was giving him a bye. That he had to meet deadlines, that he had a lot more responsibility. And he said, "Learning it while I'm in high school-"
That's the point.
"-is really a, a wonderful benefit." David?
Regarding transferability of the early, uh, college credits, is there any mechanism in place to collect that information from, on transferability from institutions and feed that back to students during the selection process?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, the, the state, like mass transfer, um, if it's a Massachusetts college, um, there's all kinds of things on, on the dashboard of like what transfers and what doesn't. Um, that's all part of our decision-making with Simon's Rock about like what we're offering. And it's been part of like vetting classes that our faculty has come up with. Is, is, that's one of the pieces we look at is, is it transferable within the Massachusetts system um, of colleges? And so, you know, that's, that's all part of kind of how, how we look at like what we're gonna call certain classes and what the syllabus will look like. We wanna try to make it so that it gives the kids the most chance of, of that being transferable.
And this is just a small question there. If you have these 14 students going over for this forensic science class, are you able to take them on the marshmallow buses?
No, no, we're gonna transport them with a, a regular yellow school bus.
It's part of the grant. It's in the funding.
Oh, okay. You answered my other, thank you.
Yeah. Um, and, uh, obviously the advantage of, of that is, you know, it's, um, I found out today that a person driving also drives in the afternoon. So, um, there's no chance of like us sending the buses before that last bus gets here. Because really, we wa, we wanted to do it in a way so that kids who take the bus home could get home. They didn't have to set up special transportation because they got back here at like 3 o'clock. So, especially since this is the first time we've, we've sent kids off-campus like this. We wanted to make it as seamless as possible with extracurriculars or with transportation, so.
Wonderful.
We'll see what happens tomorrow, but I'm excited for it.
Looking forward to it. I mean, it's a learning curve for everyone.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Anything? Jesse, did that conclude? Thank you.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to cover. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I thought you were gonna go out and check on the game.
He's watching my face.
And what is the tech, what is the texting say?
The whole team is up. Yeah, we're up by one, when I, before I got up there, so.
Okay.
Boys are tired of that. I don't want to do this.
Okay. We're on to our subcommittees. Sarah?
Yep, um, Beth touched on this too. Uh, we did meet on Tuesday, um, and we, we met with Chris and Ed from Buildings and Grounds, and they proposed, um, they gave us their proposals for technology and buildings and grounds, and that was, that was really about it. And then we'll meet again next Thursday, the eighth, and then I think two weeks after that, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. It's, it's that time of the year. It's the season. All right. Nancy?
Um, I will be getting in touch with everybody about, um, setting up the time to meet to come up with our next newsletter.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Dennis?
Uh, we haven't had a meeting recently, but we just got some more, you know, stuff from the, from MASC and the state. Changes to policies, so we're gonna have to, you know.
Get on the stick.
Yeah, those taken care of.
Thank you, yeah, we definitely do. And you're also, will you discuss, please, in your subcommittee whether we want to bring MASC in to, um, find out what, what services they would provide for us since we're dealing with so many policies? Or do you want me to follow up with MASC as to what they would do?
Well, I'm not sure we've got any agreement amongst ourselves on whether that's a good thing to do or not.
No, that's what I'm saying. Do you want me to find out what it is they will do so that your committee can then discuss it?
Well, what I, what I think we need to do as a, uh, as a body is kind of figure out what that would cost us, among other things.
Yeah, well, that's what I, I, if you want, I will call our regional person, find out the cost and the services, and then your team can figure out where to go from there.
Again, I'm not very well sold on it.
I, you're hiding that so well, Dennis.
Carl has a chance at it?
Yes, Carl. Thank you.
I, I'm concerned that for a number of school committee meetings, we have talked about the need for the policy subcommittee to meet because each, the more time that goes by and we don't meet, meet, the more policy updates, changes, revisions take place, or, and, and need to happen, we need to address them. Pushing it down the road, which we have done for a long time, is not doing us any favors. It just means more work to do and that when it finally happens that we, that the policy subcommittee gets together to discuss this, the, the work will appear, the work that needs to be done will appear to be overwhelming.
Yes.
And we'll throw up our hands and say, it's too much, we can't do it, let's not meet. I don't think that's a great solution. I think, I think, well, now is the time to do it. Why don't we, at this meeting today, why doesn't Dennis ask the members when they can appear for a policy subcommittee meeting in the very near future? I'm on that policy subcommittee. I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to be as flexible as possible and meet whenever we can have our next meeting date. Who else is on that subcommittee? Kyle?
David. David.
And David, the four of us.
Mm-hmm.
Art won't stay.
Art, yeah.
Oh, Art is too. So I have another suggestion.
Art, he's, yeah, Kyle.
Four is a terrible number to have on a subcommittee.
It's not, well, you would have Dennis, so you would have had five. One?
We would have had five, but now we have four because we don't know, we don't know when Art will be back. And if we're going to have a policy subcommittee, say within the next two or three weeks, when Art will not be available, we, we, we should have five so that the, so that the quorum is three, yeah, we're looking at.
I'm just laughing, we're staring at you.
We're looking at, at Bonnie, who, who has the great freedom to be on any subcommittee because she's the chair.
I pass it off to the vice chair, but he's.
That is.
So can we have, can we, can we have, I mean, I, I, I'm making a suggestion that we have two things. One, that we set a meeting now, and two, that we, that, that you, as chair, appoint with, with the agreement of that person you appoint, a fifth, a temporary fifth person so that the quorum will be three and not three out of four, three out of five and not three out of four.
So let me start with that. Is there anybody who would be willing to temporarily go on to policy?
Don't, don't, notice that gray brush paint?
Yeah, exactly.
Or the roulette wheel has spun your number.
Again. Well, if, if there's, don't give me that look. I, if, yeah, if I have to, I mean, you've got, you've got to meet. Dennis is right. I mean, Dennis is right, Carl is right, that Dennis, you have to call a meeting. Now, I know your Tuesdays are out. But of the people on that subcommittee, how many can meet during the day?
I can.
Probably.
Okay. Oh, you can't?
I have work.
I know, that's why I said you can't. So it would have to be a five, what's the earliest you could get here?
Boshia?
Five thirty is probably the closest I could get.
Okay, so if we did a five thirty, um, and can you pick a date right now, Dennis?
Well, I think we need to get the fifth first, you know.
You're stuck with me.
There, you got her, you're looking at her.
So you were going to, um, yeah, you're already on it.
No, I'm not.
I thought you were.
No, you tell me that every time, but I am not.
I thought you were also because of, I listened to Dennis.
So you're stuck with me. Um, five thirty, give us two dates. In February. Could I selfishly make?
My calendar handy.
Are people here during vacation week? Are you there on vacation week?
I'll be here.
How many meetings are we gonna have? A million, but, um, not before Art gets back. Okay.
You know what I mean?
Fridays would be the best day for me.
At five thirty? Is it like happy hour?
Whatever.
Are you kidding me?
Fridays are good for me.
No, but it's gonna be, if I have to do policy on Friday night at five thirty.
No, the, unfortunately, my, my daughter is, uh, my wife takes my daughter to gymnastics, uh, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and they're gone basically the second I get home until like eight or nine at night. So realistically, it's Thursdays and Tuesdays for me.
Okay.
That's really lucky.
Suppose we could meet on a weekend if anybody wants to do that.
Fight your time.
I am literally losing.
How about the fifteenth?
Really not going with my work-life balance.
Fifteenth would be a good day for me.
The fifteenth, Thursday at five thirty.
Okay, you can't have me.
No?
I am gone.
You good, Carl, for this?
Why not?
Thanks for pushing that.
Yeah, we gotta do it.
Yeah.
I won't be there, just so you know.
So that's February fifteenth?
February fifteenth, five thirty.
Here, right?
Yes. All right. Um, can we also do the twenty ninth?
Twenty ninth would, would also work for me.
Leap, leap year day, day.
Fine, with me.
Kyle?
I'm not here again.
Okay.
You're not there either? Nope.
I, I, there's a caveat to my saying yes to all this stuff. That's barring another, you know, medical emergency, another broken, broken tibia on the right side.
Then you should avoid it.
Those are both travel weeks, so that means you're gonna have to watch.
All right, the twenty ninth.
I knew you were gonna object to my, giving myself a canary, right?
Yes, you got it. All right, so we have two things there. Are you here the twenty seventh, the Tuesday? No?
So we're gone, I'm gone the fourteen through that, and I'm gone the twenty seventh through the first, so.
Dennis, could you do the twenty seventh at five thirty?
Twenty seventh is always a bad day for me.
Because it's a Tuesday, because the wheels on wheels, right? All right, well, we have the fifteenth and the twenty ninth. Would, we're that much better off, five thirty, fifteenth and twenty ninth, eight?
If, if you're looking for, you have to be able to attend, why not just push it out, we can do March seventh.
Oh, that's the budgets, that's our budget here.
Crazy time. Okay.
You can just push aside what you need input from the administration on?
So, so.
School committee meetings on March seventh, right?
That's the budget, that's the budget hearing.
So we're really limited because you can only do Tuesdays and Thursdays, and Dennis can't do Tuesdays, which gives us Thursday when the school committee has to meet.
That's why I proposed the alternative I did.
Yes, the weekend, too bad, nope.
Well, I didn't say I wanted to. I wanted to, I felt like I could give another option.
Yes, that was very considerate of you. All right, so we could get moving on that, thank you.
Just a quick question for Michelle. Uh, the, the fact that we have done this here, do you, Michelle, calendar this for, uh, for preparing or contacting Dennis to prepare an agenda with the appropriate notice requirement? Does that happen? It's so, it's, it's on your calendar now, okay.
Well, it's in my notes.
Because she would also be putting it on my calendar.
Yeah, and Dennis, you will, you know, figure out which policies will be done which time?
Yeah, we've, we've got a good panel.
Yes, and that's why Carl is pushing us. Thank you.
Thanks to our MASC buddies.
Yes. Okay.
We're set on the twenty ninth, the five thirty?
We're set on the fifteenth and the twenty ninth.
You're welcome.
Twenty ninth.
Twenty second and the twenty ninth.
No, the fifteenth and the twenty ninth. And the twenty ninth.
Fifteenth and the twenty ninth?
Yes, Thursdays.
Why did I also put in the twenty second?
Because you're here.
I don't have, you're here because of finance.
I don't think anybody here knows the answer to that.
You have a finance subcommittee then. Now, I will say, if anybody is willing to take my place on policy.
Oh, you think you're getting out of it now? Nice try.
Please, consider, you know.
Are you volunteering to leave?
It hasn't even started.
Yeah, it hasn't even started, but I had a volunteer for finance.
Yeah, I was gonna say that hopefully Art will be.
Maybe Art will be back.
Yeah, by the twenty ninth, yeah, probably not by the fifteenth, but the twenty ninth, yeah.
Okay. Personnel negotiations, we don't have anything at this point, but we are looking forward to that time of next year. Uh, Buildings and Grounds, obviously Art is not here. Um, Jim, the superintendent of evaluation. Sarah, Beth brought this up to me today. We won?
Yes.
No way. Oh, my God.
Amazing, very exciting.
What was the score?
Uh, we were up by three, point three seconds to go and we're going to the free throw line, so there's no possible way.
Oh, all right. Congratulations.
That's awesome.
To us.
Well, so we have a tentative date for the, uh, mid-year review. Michelle and I are gonna get in.
Yeah, basically, I think what we'll deal with is, Sarah, you, you have last year's calendar of what we did.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if you and I can speak at some point, and let's see if we could streamline this, this.
Yeah, this is really just a.
You know, account, right. Okay, great.
Like how, like the, how the whole survey, like the dates, what it went on.
Yeah, and what we're doing.
I think I put it in the minutes, but I'll do it, I'll look for it again.
Great. Yeah, thank, okay. Moving on, executive minutes review, favorite team.
Yeah, well, that, that is the subject of today's executive session, so.
Oh, okay.
Right, so I have nothing to report other than that we're gonna have an executive session related to, uh, reviewing, uh, executive session, uh, minutes.
Uh, warrant representative, I assume you've gone along signing those warrants, right?
Yep.
Okay. Curriculum subcommittee has not met. Do the, uh, anything new as our MASC liaison?
No, although I, I, I have a, a, something in, in the recesses of my brain say that I, I owe somebody a report on, uh, the resolutions, which hasn't been delivered, and hopefully, uh, I, I can, it's very short.
Okay.
Way shorter than, than the resolutions meeting.
Right.
At, 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 at the conference, at least four. It was crazy. There were members of the resolution committee at MASC who actually finished a novel. They started it at the beginning and finished it at the end, by the end.
All right. Um, Kyle, has the Eagle Fund contacted you? All right, I'm gonna make, contact them again and see what's going on. Um.
Uh, can I?
Yes.
Just the, the Eagle Fund, they're, they're moving to that new schedule of awards, or having the grant process in October, so that might be the reason why they, there's no, there's no process for this year, um, as they move our school on the same schedule that most of their other grants are on.
Okay.
So they met with Charles and I earlier in the year to just explain how that was gonna go. So that's probably why they have a conference.
Okay. Just for the sake of CTSB, the report was that we have been shifted by the Taconic Foundation to the same yearly schedule of other grants, which would be in October, so we will figure out what the situation is with making sure you're, you are informed. All right. Um, moving along. Nancy?
Nothing.
Okay, and I have nothing with childcare, um, community health, Kim?
She will have nothing.
She's gotta worry about her health.
Right.
Um, so, and the regional agreement review, we have not met. Um, future agenda items. The, the annual audit report.
When we have it, you will.
Okay. And nothing new with collaboration, and then the district newsletter.
Pending to send it in.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll get those out.
Thank you. So Nancy will follow up. All right, I'll take a motion for executive session.
Motion.
Go ahead.
To enter into executive session pursuant to MGL, C thirty A, paragraph twenty-one, eighty-seven, comply with or act under authority of any general or special law or federally agreed to made requirements, specifically MGL, C thirty A, uh, paragraph twenty-two F and G, to review, approve, and/or release executive session minutes meetings listed in the table attached to this agenda and for the purposes listed on the corresponding agendas for such executive sessions, and not to, and not return to open session.
Second on that?
Well, I'll, I'll second it, but, but there are, uh, there's one, I'm gonna second it with, with a, a request that Jim, uh, revise his motion because, uh, the phrase, listed in the table attached to this agenda, there is no table attached to the agenda. Yes, and, and I was going to add, it has been, uh, uh, attached to the agenda on a prior, on the prior occasion when we postponed the meeting because of time constraints.
So listed in the table to be distributed during executive session?
And, and also, and the, and the same phrase appears in, in, in the conclusion of that sentence.
Okay, she'll fix that.
Okay, so we've amended that. All right, I.
Do you accept that amendment? Do you accept that amendment? Oh, it's not for me to ask, it's for Bonnie to ask. I'm sorry.
Go right ahead. You accept it. Okay. And to be distributed during executive session. All right, see nothing of any objection or anything? Let's start. Kyle?
Yes.
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 David?
Yes.
Yes. I.
And I'm an I as well. Okay. We'll give you guys, oh, Kim. Okay, great.
Oh, we'd have to give her another.
Give her an attention. We'll give you, and we are off.